Welcome to a broadcast of the recent Lorraine County Commissioners' General Meeting. Unless otherwise announced, meetings are held Wednesday morning at the Administration Building, 226 Middle Avenue, 4th floor, downtown Illyria. These are public meetings and you are invited to attend. Agendas are posted prior to the meeting at www.loraincounty.us. Click on Departments to see the Commissioners' page, then click on View Agenda.
Good morning. Can we all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Morning, everyone, and welcome to the August 29th Meeting of the Lorraine County Board of Commissioners. Commissioner Kelo has our Dog of the Week.
Jet Clampett's dog we got, August 20th. She's a beautiful female. She's between a year and a year and a half old. She was found on August 20th in Amherst Township and she's been with us nine, 10 days. She'll be available for adoption on Saturday at 3:00 then, Jack. She has a great personality, a little gun shy, but make a great pet for some. I can't believe somebody hasn't claimed her yet. If you lost a dog, a bloodhound, in Amherst Township, please get a hold of our kennel. Again, she's not quite the dog.
We have 37 other dogs available for adoption.
Little sweetheart. Don't break the broken microphone.
Under Resolutions No. 1, Javon Family Services Bills?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Kelo?
Aye.
Investments?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Kelo?
Aye.
Transfers?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Kelo?
Aye.
Acquisitions?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
The one that we held last week was not in the packet this week, and I did speak to Mr. Stewart yesterday regarding the chairs that we held back. He did say that he had sent a letter to the Commissioners. Mr. Cordes, did you ever find that letter?
It's quite possible that it came up here, but I haven't gotten to Monday afternoon, Tuesday's folders, so I'll try to look through it here and see if I can find it. But if he says he sent it, he probably did. We're just a couple of days behind on correspondence.
Okay. I did tell him that I had concerns about the fact that we're buying 54 new office chairs. I asked him how many employees he has, and he said he had 51. So everybody plus are getting new office chairs, and I told him I understand that if you need new office chairs, you should replace those that are faulty or needing replaced, but not to just arbitrarily buy 54 office chairs. And he said it is under real estate assessment, which is fine, but most people in the public don't realize that there's different funding. They think of it all as taxpayer dollars and don't realize that general fund money and real estate assessment money are two different things. So spending is spending, and I just had a concern with buying so many chairs at one time. So I guess we'll wait for that letter and deal with it next week.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Kelo?
Aye.
Travel?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Kelo?
Aye.
Bills?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Kelo?
Aye.
Under the Commissioners' authorized various personnel actions as indicated on the summary sheet for employees within jurisdictions in Lorraine County Commissioners.
Mr. Cordes?
Thank you, Commissioner. I do have actually a number of issues to talk with the Board about in the executive session. Stop grimacing, Commissioner Kelo, it won't be that bad. I have a couple of potential new hires. At 911, we've had a few retirements of senior dispatchers, so we need to go over those applications and recommendations that have been sent to us by committee. Also, I am in receipt of a Fact Finders report concerning the UAW negotiations with Children's Services that we need to brief, and also a potential sale of real estate. All three topics are allowable for executive session discussions under the sunshine law, so I'd ask at the conclusion of our regular Board meeting, we go into executive session so we can discuss those items. Thank you.
Do you have any information on this funding order from the Domestic Relations Court?
Oh, I have all kinds of information on it. What would you like to know?
Well, why don't you go ahead and explain what's going on with this for the general public?
Well, you mean the ones that's on professional services? Is that the one that's dealing with the psychological?
Psychological evaluation, right.
And I actually just received that this morning. That's Domestic Relations Court?
Correct.
I think I've indicated to you guys, I anticipated that for the last several weeks, that that was going to be court ordered. We used to share that responsibility with the Domestic Relations Courts. Several years ago, they wanted to enter into this contract, and we partnered on it, and we would pay 50%, and they would pay 50%, and we did a consulting contract. They felt, and I'm sure that they did a good job in vetting it, that that would be less costly than sending them out. And I'm talking off memory a few years ago now, so if it's a little distorted, I apologize, but that's what I believe occurred, and we were in that relationship for several years. A few weeks, maybe a few months ago, Mr. Messer and I had a couple of conversations with regard to that funding, and I indicated to him that the Board was not going to be able to give them additional money for that contract. Within a few weeks of that, then he came back, and what I expected was, well, the judges said they're not going to pay for any of it themselves, and that it was all responsibility. Several conversations took place after that. There was some discussion with council with regard to how the Ohio Revised Code reads, and then we were told that we had to pay that because it's supposed to be paid by the Treasury, not from the Domestic Relations budget. I told them that we had an understanding that at least 50% of that cost was already contained within that budget because they had been doing that all along, so that we understood that that was part of their process of what they were asking for funds for. They didn't see it that way, hence a disagreement, followed by a court order to pay for those services.
Okay. And we have the history to show that they were paying for it out of the budget.
Oh, they're not denying that.
Okay. And their budget from this year compared to last year, the only reduction is the $500,000 reduction from Turning Point and Stepping Stone that weren't mandated funding, but they have the additional revenue that came in from a third party to help out with that cost, correct?
There was some conversation about that in January of unexpected revenue versus they were going to be able to find resources internally to pay for something. I do recall that. You had more conversations with them than I did, but I do recall that they anticipated being able to move funding around to continue those services without funding from the Board, and then somebody came forward and assisted them with supplemental funding for that.
So last year, it was okay with the way the funding was. This year, they have the same funding, and now they're doing a court order on it.
Well, I know not to defend the Domestic Relations Court because I want to defend our own funding over here that's been dwindling. They got hit with some funding cuts from revenue streams that they get that are in addition to the general fund monies. I don't have a clear picture in front of me of that, and I'm not trying to be contrarian. I understand your position greatly, but there may have been other events that occurred within their budget that we're not privy to, and I have had some casual conversation with Mr. Messer regarding those, and I know there was one significant cut that he mentioned to me. It was almost around $100,000 that he was dealing with in some grant funding.
We also lost the ability, because we were going to split out a vehicle also in that grant.
Well, that wasn't really a grant. The money had it from that partnership no longer was available because they were trying to move it to cover another shortfall that was created. We tried to work together on solutions. This is not a surprise to me on this court order. We have talked several times on it. I anticipated it coming, and you can anticipate there's going to be a few more of these. I've been holding off on several of these type payments for common pleas, domestic relations, and saying, well, you used to pay this, and they're saying, well, yeah, we used to, but we can't anymore, and it's your responsibility.
And with this, what is the dollar amount?
If I recall, it's somewhere 80, 90,000. Please, do you remember what that contract was for psych services?
This is for, I believe, an expert witness fee bill that was going back and forth.
But it's also the psych fees for the consultant, too, I believe.
Right. I'm not sure what that contract is this year, but I know the expert fee was like a little over six grand.
And how much? The psych contract was right around 80, 90, 100,000?
Right, but I don't believe they used her yet this year.
Ah, I think they have. They're still doing the exams.
I think they were taking that out of a different funding source.
Okay. Again, those are issues that are in front of us right now, whether it's as far-reaching as covering those exams or it's just specific to the individual one for this case. The other one, if it's not included and they're thinking for this, it's coming.
Right. The only reason I bring this up is a lot of people always ask about spending here in the county. This is something where the judges can just go through and order their budget. There's really not much we can do on this unless we want to take them to court and state that they're not spending wisely, which I think we do have some history with the courts, all of them, where some of the spending could be in question, especially with the stepping stone and turning point. But just for the general public to know that two different branches of government, they can go through, they can order this, and by them doing this, now we're going to have to come up with a way to offset this through a different department. So elections are important, and take a look at the judges. Don't just look at where they stand on, as far as justice, but how are they going to manage their budget as well, because it comes back, it hurts the police department, it's going to hurt the coroner, it's going to hurt every other department in the county when they can go through and just order their budget.
It's where we have all the responsibility and not much of the authority.
Approving or disapproving the reading of the same, the County Commissioners' meeting minutes of August 22nd?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Kelo?
Aye.
Provide for guarantee of payment of principal and interest by Lorraine County and the issuance and sale of bonds by the Lorraine County Port Authority for the benefit of the Lorraine County Land Relegalization Corporation.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
Mr. Cordes, would you just give a perfunctory explanation, or we do have Pat Metzger here?
We do. Just, you know, this is, it's pretty clear cut. This is the continuation of the relationship between the newly formed Land Bank and the Lorraine County Port Authority as the sub-recipient of grant funding and becoming and acting as the implementation arm of both the county and the land bank to accomplish the goals and objectives set forth with regard to the requirements of land banks. The availability of money from the AG office is significant. As we've talked in the past, we're looking at a few million dollars. The first $500,000 being a non-matched amount of funds, and the second million-plus being on a one-for-one match. The unfortunate part even of the first $500,000 is it's a spend and receive. It's a do-and-get type of relationship, and the doing will happen pretty quick, the getting's going to take some time. Therefore, we will have cash flow management issues with regards to being in the community and delivering these services while we're waiting on receipt of funding. The process laid out by the AG, I don't believe it's too complicated or cumbersome, but it is lengthy, the things you need to submit to receive reimbursement, and clearly, like most organizations, the state has been under reductions like us, and things are a little bit slower with regard to that. So we're going to have to have a significant amount of cash to work through those issues on a revolving basis. That said, the Port Authority is going to issue notes and keep it in the short term, debt management, while we work through this process, and then they will work with the Land Bank and the Board of Commissioners on future solutions. But for right now, we need cash flow. Port Authority does have some money that they're starting out with, but it's not going to be enough to bridge that gap in the cash flow. In order for the Port to borrow money, since they are not the owner of the ability to raise, lower, or do away with, or put in place the DRETAC additions to the delinquent properties, it has to be guaranteed by that entity that controls that, and that would be the Lorraine County Board of Commissioners, similar to what we did with the Lorraine County Visitors Bureau some years ago with regard to the hotel motel bed tax. While it goes to the Visitors Bureau, that Visitors Bureau, not only are they designated by this Board of Commissioners and can be undesignedated, and another organization can be designated as a Visitors Bureau Convention Center Bureau, because those things are up to this Board, so that group isn't the group that must get those monies.
Can.
Can get those monies. You also, the receipts from the taxes are yours to distribute. So when we were working with the Visitors Bureau, they had a hard time, A, being bankable, and B, securing the proper guarantees to borrow money when they wanted to put their building up. The Port Authority agreed to issue their financing, but the county had to agree that they would pay that debt service from the proceeds of the motel hotel bed tax. Once again, you can eliminate that tax or redirect that tax to a different entity, so we could not be, could not underwrite the debt with the security of that organization had it come from the county. Very similar arrangement now to the land bank.
Which was a discussion in our last land bank meeting, and this is just formalizing that process.
Exactly.
Yeah, what happens if we don't do this?
We don't take down any houses, and we don't access any money from the AG.
Okay. And what communities are ready to move right now?
The city of Lorraine already has, if they either haven't passed, they will be passing. We were out there last week, about 15, 18 properties that have cleared waivers and are ready to be worked on. The city of Illyria has a few that they're close to being hopped up, but they still have a few things they need to do to them. I was hopeful they'd be a little further, but they're still, they're down the continuum enough that there's a clear line of sight that we will get some work from them within a reasonable amount of time. We're meeting with the township representative next week, and we're having open discussions with other communities and setting meetings up with them.
If we delayed this by a month, what would it do? Would it be?
If you delay it by a month, that's a month that we're not tearing down houses, and we're going to get into the winter, and there's going to be less work in the winter.
I don't have any intent of stopping it myself, so.
Well, the only thing I'm looking at is with the Amherst Township and Sheffield Township sewer rate increases with the city of Lorraine, and talking with several of the Lorraine officials, it appears that they don't care what type of agreement they've had or what type of agreement we come across. They're going to hold steady on that 100% increase on the residents in those townships. This could possibly give us some leverage with Lorraine.
I think this is a totally different issue, Tom. I mean, this is the land bank countywide.
I understand.
You start selecting communities to go after.
Well, it's not.
I mean, that's not what the land bank was formed for, the ability the state legislature gave us to do these things.
Well, we know the majority of the properties will be in Lorraine. We are using through the D-Tax money from other communities. We're taking it away from the schools and that, and this is really something that, besides going to litigation with Lorraine, it might be something that we can force them to do, to do the right thing with the land bank. I spoke with one person, I won't mention the name right now, but what they told me was, well, we have flooding in the city of Lorraine, and by going through and adding the additional fees onto the residents in the township, that's going to fix the problem in Lorraine. That's an elected official in the city of Lorraine that's stating that.
Well, you ought to have said it, though. I mean, to say those type of things, I mean, that's getting pretty, you know, where they're pawning off repairs based on the outside of the communities, I think that would be something you would say publicly, who did that, to call them on the carpet for it. I can't see where they're allowed to under law. We're running an hour on the full yard.
Which, we go out to that funding of IMA, flooding, not funding, flooding. I think what they may have been trying to share was that some of the positioning I heard coming out of Lorraine has to do with water infiltration of existing sewers, specifically the ones that are aging that were tied into Lorraine that apparently didn't have or didn't have or do need maintenance. They believe that is bringing an in and out amount of storm water through the sanitary sewer into Lorraine, thereby overtaxing their system. They say they have put flow meters in place to measure that infiltration.
From the townships?
From that, not just from the townships, from that area that's under argument right now, for lack of another term. We've had a significant amount of problems with water infiltration, as you know, in our package plans, and to the point where we've relined complete sewers, and you know what the cost is there. Now, I'm not defending Lorraine's action. I think that a unilateral approach and dropping it on the residents out there was completely unacceptable and poorly executed without looking at options and discussion points before it occurred. But water infiltration is a major issue with aging sewers, and I think that's what Lorraine has been saying, and I didn't mean to interrupt, but.
No, you're fine. The county just spent, well, we spent $3.6 million.
We spent a ton of money on relining sewers, and we're still having problems with water infiltration from aging laterals on those. So I think what Commissioner Williams's hearing has some merit, and I think probably the elected official that said it was probably trying to relate that.
Yeah, the only issue is the county engineer kind of disagrees with that theory on there, and then when you go through and you take a look at the infrastructure with the city of Lorraine. Now, if they really want to get into this here, I would love to, because this kind of brings into my background with the engineering and quality, I'm going to want to see the calibration records, I'm going to want to see the data points, and I have asked for that information, and the trustees have asked for that information. We have yet to receive that, which should be readily available.
Absolutely.
But that's what they base their judgment on.
And once again, you know I'm not substantiating their position, I'm only saying what they say is.
Right. And we also have, I mean, there are federal dollars that went in, and also local dollars that went in to help try to eliminate that problem with things that were built in the Amherst Township area.
Well, sure, it was part of the federal funding they received on not only building, but upgrading the waste treatment facilities, because they were given federal dollars for a geographical region that included those areas.
I actually brought the paper up in case something came up today.
Yeah, we just got that yesterday. Is there more than this?
There may be pieces still coming in. I started going over it, and Commissioner Kelo asked me about some specific sections of it.
Yeah, I was looking through that and highlighting some things.
So, I mean, it needs to be digested more fully, and we need to look over it, but my first initial indication is that it comes close to talking about a cap on a, at a city rate, but it doesn't get there. There's a lot of whereas, what for's, and where ifs, and not a lot of straight out, this is what we're going to do. It was probably written by people that get paid by the sentence, because there's pages that I don't think really mean anything in the whole agreement. But I wish it was as clear as some of the sewer agreements that we have worked on, which say, you know, they may charge this amount and nothing to exceed this over the in-city rate. We've been that clear in the agreements that we've made. But I still think, and I'm hopeful that there's still the ability for reasonable minds to sit down and come up with a more acceptable solution, and I would like to look at that West Side Intercept sewer agreement that we fostered with the community. If that was agreeable back then, we may be able to use that as a universal tool, get rid of all of these smaller agreements, all of these smaller issues, and come up with one master agreement. And that needs to be worked on. And it not only needs to be worked on in Lorraine, it needs to be worked on in Illyria because we have a, you know, a smattering of different agreements there also.
And I'm in agreement with you, Mr. Williams, about the whole sewer rate increase, and I believe that we should do whatever we can to reverse that decision by City Council, but I'm afraid saying, you know, we're going to delay the land bank because of those sewer rates, and it's kind of like blackmailing Lorraine, and I don't think legally is that something we can even do, Mr. Ennis, is it?
Well, I mean, it's a leverage.
It's almost like blackmail, though. If you don't, you know, you don't come to terms with us on the sewer agreement, then we're not going to do any demolitions on your houses in Lorraine.
Well, the way, I'll just state my view on this, is we're taking money from other communities in order to fund this program through the D-Tax, and this is money that we know is going to go primarily to the city of Lorraine. And it's a, it's a program that can be beneficial. However, the elected officials in Lorraine are playing politics with the sewer rate increase. I think everyone's aware of that. They know that the residents in the townships can't vote for them.
Right.
And they know if they did this type of increase on the residents in Lorraine, all of City Council would be chased out, including the mayor. So I think it's just something to use for leverage, stating that if you want to work with us and you want to have partnerships with the entire county, you need to be fair and provide a reasonable rate with them. If you can't do that, then why should the rest of the county pay for something that's going to benefit you, and that being the city of Lorraine? That's how I'm viewing this, and it's very, you know, other, even Mr. Fowler's made a comment to me that 100%, that's a good rate compared to other cities. We could be charging more. I mean, and the way the resolution was written, it was up to 200% is what, so they could actually go another 100% based on the resolution that City Council approved. So they could double it, so they could go be paying anywhere from 50 to $100, what they're paying more today. If they increase it again, that could go up another 50 to $100. We're the only ones in the county that really has a position to try to affect Lorraine in doing the right thing without going to litigation, and we know if it goes to litigation, it's going to be out there for a year or two years, and they know that they can probably wear the residents down, and eventually they're going to get tired of it and move on.
I don't quite think that City Council's thinking, Tom. This isn't a used car deal. The land bank was put up for the benefit of the county, now you start trying to hold back this money from cleaning up some of those neighborhoods that are affecting the residents there. I don't think where that is. I think there's a proper way of working through this. Do I agree with the increase? No, I think there has been a better way of doing it, but at this point, we have to sit down and do our best to negotiate with them. City Council goes into session next week, and I've had plenty of discussions, because as I get all the emails, I'm the Lorraine Commissioner. But, yeah, I don't think that's how you go about doing government. That's not what we're elected to do here, is to sit and hammer back and forth, and, you know, that's just not how business is meant to be done, what we got elected for. We're doing a land bank, to do a land bank to benefit everyone, and granted, a bulk of these houses coming down at first are all the city of Lorraine, because they have the worst. But, you know, they pay a decent amount with delinquent tax also they won't receive, and their school district, so, I mean, I'm not looking to hold this up at all, and I think we can go into effective negotiations with the city of Lorraine and how we can address the issues with the sewer rates.
Well, again, it's not the, politics is what, not what I want to do, but when I hear from the elected officials in the city of Lorraine, how they want to utilize this basically and have other people pay and do the improvements, and basically state that we know they can't vote for us, that's where I get very concerned on what the city of Lorraine is going to do as far as the elected officials. And according to the city, they're going to be looking at expanding and charging more for additional contracts on sewers and water, so.
Like I said a few weeks ago, I don't believe the city council was completely aware of what the increase meant to those residents, as did the residents not realize when they got the letter from the city of Lorain what that increase was going to mean and how significant it was going to be. So, reasonable minds on city council, you know, if we discuss with them and help them to understand exactly what happened, I think we can get farther than what you're talking about. Mr. Ennis, you didn't answer me. There's a fine line between leverage and blackmail, and I'm not sure if this would be, what this would be considered, if we hold back on the land bank to get the city of Lorain to rescind that resolution.
Well, I don't think it's Commissioner Williams' intention to blackmail them. I'm not going to...
No, it's not intentional blackmail.
It's kind of blackmail, but not really bad.
It's in business, this is how you can go through and get, force someone to do the right thing. Trust me, to me, doing the right thing should be a no brainer. You go in there and you look at it, and you say, you know what, this is unreasonable. This is price gouging. What we're doing is wrong.
Right.
Lorain, Lorain looks at it as, this is the way we can get money without, and we don't have to pass it on to our residents. And I think if they went through, if they went through and they used the 30% for additional for residents outside the city limits, and they did a 70% tax or 70% increase, and I'm not calling for this by any means, but if they did a 70% increase for the residents in Lorain, that would in turn been a 70% increase for all the residents.
Right.
And I don't think anyone, would they be upset? Absolutely. But there would be, it would be fair as far as the way they're handling it.
And I agree.
And the reason they're not doing it, and you know this, Ms. Kowski, is they would be chased out. The mayor would be a one-term mayor if he did a 70% increase on the residents in Lorain. But because they can't vote for them in the townships, this is what they're doing.
I don't know, I'm, I'm sure all the people in the townships have plenty of friends and relatives that live, you know, a minute away in the city of Lorain who, you know, it's, just because it's in the township, it trickles back into the city, no doubt about it. And, you know, this is the reason why I got involved in politics way back when, when I got on city council, is because of a assessment, you know, so, you know, I'm going to be there to fight this all the way, but I don't know if stopping one really good project is going, is the answer. I think we can sit with council and we can talk to the mayor and ask them graciously to rescind that. Like I said, the people that received that letter...
I mean, I, I hope you're right that they will do it and that we can all sing kumbaya together, but...
I think we should try that first, before we say, you know, stop the progress on the much-needed land bank and the demolitions that, you know, we want to not only spend our money, we've been saying we want to get everybody else's money that's not able to get those demolitions done in a timely manner. So, I don't want to delay any progress on the land bank.
They meet next Tuesday, because Monday being the holiday. If they came out and they repeal this issue and say, you know what, until we get all the information, we can prove to everybody that this is needed by getting the, measuring the flow for the sewer rates going in from the different townships, and the calibration of the equipment and everything, that they have the data to prove this, that's fine. I mean, we could do, we could ask them to do that. We could write a resolution right now, ask them to do it, and see what their actions is, what action they take, and delay this by one week, and see if they're actually going to play ball. I just don't know, I don't have the feeling that they're going to.
I wouldn't be opposed to having a resolution, and I think we need some good factual numbers in there as far as what the increases look like to these people, and ask the city of Lorain to reconsider their resolution on the rate increase.
I think it should be that they repeal their resolution until they can provide the data showing what the, the reason they're justifying this increase.
Did you make that part of your records request?
The records, well, my records requests have been all on the resolutions, but talking with Mr. Fowler, he stated that he's got this. We've asked for the data showing what, how much flow is going in or going out of the townships into the city. We haven't received that, and the meeting that we were going to have scheduled for September 10th has now been moved back to the last week of September.
Did you happen to ask for the meeting minutes when Mr. Fowler presented this to council?
I don't believe we have.
I think we need to get that, too.
Okay.
Because I, I'm not 100% sure, but I'm pretty sure that it was related, relayed to council that this would help future infrastructure projects in the city of Lorain if they did this. So I, can you, can you ask for that also, since you're getting all the other information?
Yeah.
Okay.
Call for the question.
And then, do you want to hold off on this for one week?
No, I don't want to slow the land bank down. I don't think we have to sit here and punish the residents of another community while we're negotiating government-wise, and so far in all of our paperwork that we've all gone through, unless Tom Spom's something 73 I didn't have that he's, Neil's sending to me. I mean, we're still digging through all this, and I'm sure city council hasn't been through all of this. So, I mean, no, I'm not willing to slow down the land bank. I want to get that started. Spent two years working on that, and we're at the point to move forward. And if there's 17 or 18 homes to go, I think it's our responsibility, those neighborhoods and those residents, get those houses torn down.
Well, I mean, this is not going to, I mean, this is not me, we're not going to give Lorain a check or going to tear down a house right away anyway, so this is just to get the funding in place to be able to go forward with the land bank.
That's correct.
Yeah, it just guarantees the commission, the wraparound...
So, it doesn't guarantee anything for the city of Lorain at this point?
No, it just guarantees we'll do the wraparound, guaranteeing the revenues that the port authority through the land bank will be using. It's, I think they got confused there.
So, we still have, right.
There's no approval of any demolitions. The land bank isn't meeting right now to approve those things. This is a guarantee of the county to do the wraparound, guaranteeing that we'll guarantee the revenues coming in, so they can go out for notes, and when they're ready to tear down, money is available.
I'm going to, I'm going to say, yeah, go ahead and call for the question.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
No.
Mr. Kayle?
Aye.
I'm going to be, I'm going to think positively and hope that the city of Lorain will, will see that what they, that they need to rescind that change, that repeal that, so.
Under community development, we're contracted J.A. Kilby Enterprises, Inc., North Ridge fund the amount of $8,690, includes a contingency for any unforeseen change orders for grant assistance to Garnet in Kester samples at 35184 Elm Road, Grackton, for roof replacement. Twelve invitations were sent, three received, this being the most responsive complying with specifications will be paid from the home chip, chip home repair account.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Kayle?
Aye.
Under EMA Homeland Security, we're contracted Health and Safety Services, Ashland, Kentucky, to provide tactical body armor in the amount of $62,370. Four bids were received on August 2nd, this being the most responsive, and will be paid 100% by federal homeland security grant accountant over equipment.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Kayle?
Aye.
Under Golden Acres, increase the room rates at Lorain County Golden Acres Nursing Home, 276 for semi-private and 178 for private, effective October 1st, 2012, which reflects a $3 increase.
So moved.
This is, what rate is that? Is that a monthly rate?
Daily.
Daily rate?
Day rate, yes.
And it's all-inclusive?
All right.
It's all-inclusive, and it's, it's just...
Do you want a second this time? Sorry.
I'm sorry.
Do you want a second?
Oh, a second, I'm sorry.
Okay. Discussion, sorry.
It's, we moved the, the private pay rate with the Medicaid rate on what we're doing. So, this is just a maintenance, housekeeping issue, which, well, we have, we don't have that many private pay beds.
It's, the rate's the same as Medicaid rate?
It's usually what we do.
Is it? Okay. Any other questions?
Nope.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Kayle?
Aye.
Under job and family return, Tana Summer Youth Employment Program funds allocated by Ohio Department of Job and Family Services for state fiscal year 12 and 13. County receives $648,167 and $7 cents, and rural return $260,642 and $42 cents. So another county has the opportunity to use the funds for Tana Summer Youth Program.
So moved.
Second.
We didn't quite get the participation we needed.
I, I knew this was going to come up, and I did ask for a report, and it may be in that correspondence file with the letter on the chairs. Let me say that these funds are really hard to use with, first of all, you have to have, you have to deal with youth that are at risk for the most part and are currently in the system receiving services. So they're, they're a challenging group to provide services to. We had a few hundred thousand dollars of that money over at WDA, and we've been scrambling to get that money spent ourselves. So, I don't know, I don't even know yet if this return number includes anything that we may have residual over at WDA. I hope that this is the all-in number. We didn't get all this money over at WDA, we got part of this money, but we, we even had some of these youth working the fair to help the fair, fair folks out, you know, with, working around so they could reduce their cost. I think we had 10 or 12 people out there. The transportation cost alone to get them to the jobs is, killed us. The, but the objectives of the program are such that we have to take those extraordinary measures to put, put these youths to work for the summer. So I'm not going to be critical of Job and Family Services. They did give contracts out to various organ, community organizations, nonprofits, et cetera, that probably were as challenged as, as we were and didn't have the resources we did over at WDA to try to keep the youth engaged and employed. I think that next year, when we look at, especially at WDA, we're going to be revamping our youth program completely with regard to work experience and youth work experience and the relationships with employers in the community, because I'm just simply, completely unsatisfied with the way we were able to handle this influx of funding both this time and, I thought we had gotten over some hurdles with the stimulus money the year before with youth employment services, but we haven't. And we need to do a better job, and by year's end, we're going to restructure that whole component of workforce development. We're just waiting for the governor's initiatives to come down with regard to some of the changes in workforce development. So I, I still think they did a really good job. The money was unexpected, it came fast, and they got as much out in the community as they could.
And, well, it says 260 to go to another community, but the program is about over, isn't it?
It's about over, it'll end in a few weeks. There's, there's some residual now, but schools are starting and things like that. But there, there may be other communities that, that can still, you know, can still stretch some of the dollars, or they, they may have the need right now, saying we can go another couple of weeks, we can get some of that money. We don't release it, that's even worse than...
Not using it, yeah.
Than not using it.
Right, okay.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Kayle?
Aye.
Under Salloway, Supreme 33, refurbish computers to our family, to provide computer literacy training and experience in completing research projects to schoolchildren.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Kayle?
Aye.
Mr. Cordes County Administrator?
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Commissioners, I have a couple of issues this morning, and I want to start with asking Mr. Romancheck to come up to the, to the microphone, and we need to do some work on NSP with regard to Albany Avenue. Did you give a handout to each one of the board members?
I've got them right here.
I apologize for this coming late to you. I just got this yesterday, and Don was working furiously on it. They changed some timelines for us for reporting and things we have to do. NSP has been a very challenging program from the onset. We need to make a few awards today, and I asked him to be prepared to make you a quick presentation rather than just ask you to digest a written collateral in front of you. So with that done, let's, let's keep it brief, but I want you to at least hit the salient points.
Okay. Thank you. First and foremost, the first resolution that we would need to award today is the actual construction of the four homes on Albany Avenue that we've been working very hard to get everything prepared for. We do have the demolition done. We did our bid opening on Friday, we had a good turnout with eight, and our lowest responsive bidder was KF Construction. They came in on their base bid of $561,480, and with a couple of alternatives, which include landscaping, which is required, and these alternatives were put in so that we made sure that we would be able to award a contract and meet our NSP obligation, if for whatever reason bids came in high. Building pad prep, which is $26,000, dormers to the houses, and then there were two others that we did not recommend going. So we would recommend a total contract award of $601,280 to KF. Project needs to be completed by mid-December. We would have brought this to you next week, but the state of Ohio requested that we award the contract this week and provide the contractors an additional week of work time, just in case the weather is bad.
I, I did have a conversation with you this morning with regard to the alternates and the, the calculation of the successful bidder depending on their cost factors for the alternates, and was the apparent low bidder still the low bidder after the alternates were taken into consideration?
They were. The, the second lowest complete bid was Lucas Plumbing, and they were very similar on the first alternate, the landscaping, they were identical. On the dormers, they were about $3,000 more, and on the site work, surprisingly, they were about $14,000 more.
That's unfortunate. What I, the reason I asked to take a look at the alternates with regard to the base component bid was, I was really trying to find a way to give this to a...
Local.
To a local. This, this firm is not a local, I mean, they're, they're an Ohio firm, but I would have preferred that we had been able to find a way of getting that, that bid over to, to Lucas, so that we, we had a local contractor employing locals here doing the work. But you can see that we weren't successful at doing that. I just wanted to say that we tried to do that, because a lot of times, you know, the local contractors, they get a little miffed because they're not getting the work, and it's, it's out of our hands.
Right.
But it's automatic, because it's NSP dollars that it, prevailing wages are the minimum, right?
Yes.
It's federal dollars, it always is that way.
And there's no local preference at all.
Right, well, even when we had the local preference that has since was litigated out, we wouldn't have been able to apply it to federal dollars.
Correct.
Okay.
The project needs to be completed by December of this year, and the funds are from NSP One, and just to reiterate, the owner of the property will be the Lorain County Elderly Housing Development Corporation, and so as soon as we're done, we'll be turning over the project to them. They will be responsible for the long-term upkeep and maintenance on Albany Avenue.
That's, that's number one on your list. You can go by number two, it's not your main right now. I, I think we need to go to number three.
Number three...
Well, I just want to explain them all, then we can...
And I've got the resolutions with me as well.
Well, Madam Clerk, if you want to do them individual, I'm fine with that, too. Okay, why don't we, why don't we stay with number one? And is there any questions, commissioners, on number one?
Nope.
No. So we're going to award to KF Construction in the amount of $561,480.
Does it say, like, how, how many square feet these houses are?
They're about 1,200.
And they're ranches with a basement?
Three-bedroom ranches, basement, a garage. So it, they're nice homes, they're nothing extravagant. We had to do a little bit more site work than we would have imagined, but overall, they're just good, solid homes that fit within the neighborhood. They're not overly sized.
Two are?
Actually, one is fully handicap accessible, and three, and all, the other three are actually compliant.
The, the one will be fully built out, and the other three will be able to be built out if, if needed, but they'll have the proper widths, turn radiuses, et cetera. Normal home building doesn't take a lot of that into consideration, so later on, when you go to retrofit a home, you find that it's challenging if, if the need arises.
You're then having to reframe doors and...
Right. So that, that adds a little bit of cost to the project, but that was one of the stipulations since we were dealing with the potential for older or handicapped individuals with regard to these homes. since we were dealing with the potential for older or handicapped individuals with regard to these homes.
Do you wanna call for the question? Did we make a motion?
No, you didn't. So we're going to award to Contract KF Construction for four homes on Albany Avenue the amount of six hundred and one thousand, two hundred and eighty dollars.
Correct. So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? Skouski.
Aye.
Mr. Williams.
Aye.
Mr. Kaylow.
Aye.
Thank you. The next one would be number three on the list to take a look at. And it is an amendment to our existing agreement with Huron County to provide an additional fifty-five thousand dollars to them from the NSP allocation. Again, this is recommended from the state. They have found a developer to acquire and rehab one home in Huron County for the cost of about fifty-five thousand dollars. That the developer, the county will be providing money to the developer to do this and to sell the home. There will be no program income generated off of this. And the state has requested that we make this change and we're the lead for the, for our region.
And it's money that we can't use here in the county? We're not
That is correct. In fact, the next one I'll show where we've at least found a way to spend some more of the money and keep it in the county. And we're continuing to strive to do that.
And, and Huron has been a subrecipient with us. The, the, so if whoever gets to use the funding, we're just, we're just the administrative agent, the fiscal agent for that fund.
Oh, that's right, because it's a multi-
Correct, it's multi-county jurisdiction.
NSP One, this is like two thousand and nine money.
Right, right, right.
Right, so this, this is more housekeeping than anything else for county purposes.
Second.
Any further discussion? Skouski.
Aye.
Mr. Williams.
Aye.
Mr. Kaylow.
Aye.
Thank you. The last one is actually a little bit exciting. Number four, it's to enter into a development agreement with a local developer, Homebuyers Ohio. Been searching for replacement projects since the LMH Lorraine County Elderly Housing deal in Oberlin, Ohio fell apart. And this developer was able to locate a couple of homes in Sheffield Lake that they can acquire, fully rehab, and then our goal is to sell, but with a limited timeline. We're looking, we're also offering them the opportunity to lease it or rent it until they can find a home buyer. We would actually generate program income that would come back to us on this project so that we would then be able to use that money again for NSP eligible projects such as demolitions as they come up or additional acquisition rehab using developers. And then we'd be able to pull off a little bit of admin off of that program income as well to help cover our staff costs.
The, I just noticed, it'll be all ten homes and the eight that we approved and then these two all from Sheffield Lake. No other communities got involved or there was just no market?
Our target areas are Sheffield for new construction or, and rehabilitation are Sheffield Lake, Sheffield Township. We, and this is, the developers located these. So it wasn't us choosing, that was where they were able to find homes that they could acquire and rehab.
And within
By December.
Well, by December, but also don't, don't we have to be in a
A target area.
A targeted area. So when you get outside of some of the townships that are more contiguous to the urbanized areas, finding target areas becomes a little bit more challenging. That's why counties have had a little bit more of a struggle with NSP than cities have, getting some things done.
Well, the, the other houses are in the township, these are in the city.
Correct.
Yeah. These two are in Sheffield Lake.
Sheffield Township.
The Albanese in, in the township.
Correct.
These two are in Sheffield Lake.
No, I didn't look at the address, I just looked at the, for the mail, it just said Sheffield Lake.
Right, these, there's two here.
Or Sheffield Lake, the other ones we did, Tom, Albany Avenue, Sheffield Township.
Right.
Okay. This, this, this project has been extremely taxing to get these, this NSP money done. It's, I think it's probably one of the hardest programs that we've ever worked on. And changes came at the federal level and then with state guidance. So it's, it's been morphing a few times to make it a little easier, but when it first started, it was almost impossible to spend, to spend this money. So I gotta compliment the Community Development Department for, you know, getting to this point where we're actually doing this work, because two years ago, I would've said, "I don't think so." But, you know, even getting the, the land redone up there, we took those six lots, kinda condensed them down the floor. We had a bit of a fight with the Planning, Planning Commission and but Sheffield Township's been a good, good partner and we found some developers. So apparently we're on the right track and things are moving. And, and remembering, we didn't just use our money for demo. A lot of the communities are just doing
Demolition.
Demo. We're doing redevelopment too. I need to point it out. And that's, that's even more of a struggle to get done. That was another component of NSP, but most, most of the larger communities have not done redevelopment, they've simply done demolition.
The assessed value that they're showing, like this one for nine-twelve West Drive, is it current assessed value at the eighty-three-seven and you're anticipating once the repairs are done that it should be able to sell for about ninety-eight thousand?
That is the developers' projections based upon their analysis of the market, those neighborhoods.
Yeah, if I can weigh in on that a second. Let's keep a very, very broad, open mind on what the potential resale is. In Aliria, they, they, they had some, some projections that were provided to them that didn't exactly come about on some of the, some of the homes there. So I don't want you to look back later on and say, "Well, you know, this did, you know, you told us it was gonna be this." It's a strictly long-range projection that, that we didn't make, that was provided to us.
Right.
But that may not, it may not, at the end of the day, come, come to pass.
Well, that's why we put the ability to lease them out.
Right.
They don't sell to generate the income back.
But it's not our property, right? It's homebuyers
The homebuyers of Ohio will be owning it. They're gonna, they're gonna
Who are they?
They are a company out of Avon, Ohio, Duane Linder and Andrew Isaacs. And then their, I forget the mother's name.
Anybody can really form one of these if they wanna, they wanna try to develop homes and, and sell them and/or lease them, as long as they wanna be, you know, obligated under the requirements of the NSP.
Yes. And they've got a, they've been doing this for about four years. They've only have a couple of rentals. They weren't really excited about getting into potentially owning the real estate and managing it. But with the tight timelines of moving a family in, they did agree to a lease option to be able to fulfill it. They do believe that they would be able to sell these homes. The other thing is, they are unable to actually make a profit. So whatever money they put into it is what they will sell it for. And then we will give them a developer's fee at the completion of the project equal to fifteen percent of the project costs. So that was, that will be what, how they're making their money, is if they're able to sell it, they'll make fifteen percent of the project cost. It would be similar to general overhead and profit on a construction deal. So even though they, they did all of this for their performa, because this is how they run their business, it has, not, that will not be the sale price. The sale price will be whatever money is invested into the project.
This, this is allowed
So it's not helping somebody flip houses and making big
No.
Big profits. Okay, that's kinda what it sounded like when you first
Well, the, actually, the, the program envisioned assisting them to flip houses, but because there's so little margin, the program allows for a, a flat developer's fee
Right.
to be applied, because they were not getting any developers to the table that wanted to engage in this process early on.
And that is actually one of the changes that went in. Originally, developers were allowed to make a profit. And it wasn't working the way anyone would imagine it would have, and developers shied away. So with the developer's fee, at least, again, it's almost like they're a construction company and they're bidding to rehab a house and once they're done, they get their developer's fee or their profit on it, so.
Yeah, they, they figured out redeveloping a house in a distressed neighborhood without continuing to improve the neighborhood didn't increase the value of the house after they did all the renovation. So the program elements needed to be changed to allow those folks to come in and partner with us, but not partners so much that they were losing money on being a partner to help improve the community.
But they did the initial investment, they acquired the property, they purchased the property?
Uh, they have it identified. They have not acquired it yet because they cannot acquire the property until the environmental review is done. We just got our release on Monday from OHPO and the state of Ohio.
But they'll get that money back, the money that they pay or pay to purchase the house?
We're, we're funding the entire project for them to begin with and then we will recapture all of the funds that we put into it.
Gotcha, okay.
Except for the developer's fee.
Okay.
Who, yeah, who looks at the, the sale price? I mean, do we
We will be monitoring it.
We do mon, yeah, because one I'm looking at is eight oh six and I know depending on where you're at on a block, it can change.
Right.
There's one property, it's larger, same bedrooms, bathrooms, fifteen hundred square feet, eighty-five thousand, you go a block down. Smaller house, thirteen hundred square feet, and it's a hundred and eight thousand. So I was just wondering how they came up with
Those are actual sales.
Those are
Those are comparables.
Oh, those are
Those are sold homes.
Those are sold, okay.
Yeah.
I thought that's what they were going
Depending on the amenities and the room, I figure ninety-eight square, those are both nice neighborhoods, probably on West Drive.
Yeah, those are actual comparables for homes that have sold.
I thought that was the, yeah, I see comparable on it now.
Overall, I've been very pleased in dealing with this developer. They've been very responsive, they've even given performas that show renting is tough at when it's a hundred percent loan. And I'm making sure they pay us back. So they're, they're anxious to sell as well. They, these won't, should not be long-term rentals.
Okay. I will make a motion to, is it number four?
Yes.
Approve number four.
Second.
Ms. Skouski.
Aye.
Mr. Williams.
Aye.
Mr. Kaylow.
Aye.
Are we doing number two? Are we doing number two?
No, we're not gonna do number two, we don't need to do number two today.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is that Mr. Cortez's report?
We're still on his report.
We're still on your report, Mr. Cortez. Oh, you've got something else for us. Wow.
The, that's a double-sided. And it's gonna be made into a pamphlet. This is your collateral for your upcoming service to Cleveland with regard to time, route pulsing, and cost. Last week, the board somewhat unexpectedly, since we had talked about it for several weeks and didn't get anywhere, and then boom, we, we did it. I didn't have this with me, we hadn't finished up all the time schedules on it. Couple of things here for your consideration. We've, we have talked about the service leaving the Port Authority Commercial Complex, AKA the old DIY building on Route Fifty-seven and, and Abbey Road there. I, I need to make you aware, the service will be, will provide pickup there on the first run and drop-off there on the last run of the morning and the evening route, but it will not pick up in between. We just could not make the timing in the Cleveland and come all the way back down to that building. So the service from there will be a bit limited, but it'll still provide service from there. That's not something that we, we had previously talked about, because we were talking about service from all three locations. We do have it from all three locations, but limited at that, at that point. So we have that noted at the bottom of your collateral with regard, to the side with times on it. Also, we've looked at the, the potential for our Aliria and Lorraine routes to be at the drop-off points so that people could make the connector. We do have, we have synced that a bit. It may require some additional tweaking as we see how that, that works out with those two lines, but we believe that, that they're fairly closely aligned. But now we need to start doing it. There's always some unpredictability with regard to buses arriving and leaving, depending on traffic conditions. If we have to load a few wheelchairs onto the bus, it takes a little bit more time and so forth. I'm probably gonna leave instructions that if, if we haven't made the connector, I want the Cleveland route to wait as long as possible without missing their timeframe before they leave the, the point where ridership on the local bus would've gone to the Cleveland route. The second consideration was the cost of putting the service on. You can see that it's a three sixty-five each way, which is, includes a, a fee above, a supplement for the Cleveland service above what we're charging for the service in county and a seven twenty-five one-day ride. You wanna ride back and forth to Cleveland all day, fine. So that would be really the price of a round-trip ticket, is seven twenty-five. We are currently not going to honor transfers from the local routes to the Cleveland service. Cleveland service gotta generate its own revenue. That's what you, that's the mandate that was put down by this board. And if we, if we do transfers off the local routes, it will not generate the revenue necessary to come close to the ridership we need. We can, we can review that at some future date. I wanna start that way and then we can have discussions in the coming weeks to see how that's working out. Better we deal with it later than we impose, have to reimpose something at a future date. Lastly, I'm having all the advertising frames put on the buses. I've already lined up a few advertisers to generate some local dollars. But let me state this, don't get too excited. There's not enough frames and enough rolling billboards on the buses to, to generate all the local dollars that are needed, we're gonna need the ridership. The load is gonna have to increase significantly. We're gonna need somewhere between, you know, thirty to four, thirty to fifty percent ridership on these buses to, to make a significant impact on the cost. There may be some other variables that'll occur along the way, but at this point, I, I can't really see a clear line of sight to discussing them until we, we do this. So if you have any questions on this, now's the time to talk about it, because I wanna release this schedule and time and cost. And I think that we'll be ready, I thought, in about a week to put the service on. I've also had shelters, or they're either installed or in the process of being installed at the, the Port Authority complex, the Board of Elections, and we're installing the benches and so forth down at the Transportation Center. Because of the high overhead on those porticoes down there, I'm also installing a bus shelter down there. Part of this test run will be, you know, during the colder, rainier season and I wanna make sure people have a place to shelter from the elements when, when we do this.
Speaking of Transportation Center and buses, any other word from Greyhound?
I think that I am about ninety-eight percent sure that Greyhound will be coming to our Transportation Center and I hope to be able to tell you that officially next week. All right, we have one term and condition that we're working on. It's, it's not a significant one. I believe I can negotiate it away. So I, I hope that I'll be able to give you good news next week with regard to Greyhound. Since we haven't really talked about that, we've gotten, I've seen a lot of criticism out there, especially to the City of Aliria and the county. We have been working on this and we always worked on it, we never gave up. You have to have a willing partner to be able to accomplish something and we didn't have that. But establishing a new relationship with some folks who, Greyhound out of Detroit, above certain, you know, above the rim, so to speak, and having them visit here gave new confidence to a potential relationship. And they, they have, were here, they have toured. And I'm comfortable that we're gonna probably find the relationship and Aliria's been working with us on that too. So I wanna, wanna let you know, the mayor's been involved in her staff too, so it's a good collaboration. But back to our transit here. The, the, so the shelters will be put up and I've also, and Ms. Davis has done a good job for me. We had some problems with parking at the Board of Elections during the presidential election coming up with people coming and going. We've been able to secure a use of the Gargis lot next to the catering hall. Right now, it doesn't appear it's gonna cost anything. Mr. Gargis has, you know, been very community-minded and, and worked with us on that. And I wanna show our appreciation for that. Once we've secured that MOU, I'll ask for a letter of appreciation or something from the board to recognize that he's helping us with that, because we're gonna take the back part of that Board of Elections lot and there was some concern that there, that with the influx of early voters and staff and so forth, that there would be a need for additional parking. So that, that matter has also been resolved. At least, I believe it's been resolved. So if you have questions, let's, let's talk about them now.
It looks like we're gonna be utilizing three buses to
Two.
Two? Two? So the one from the transport, or the DIY is going to start there and go to the Board of Elections?
It'll go to the Transportation Center, because it's right down the road, and then it'll go to the Board of Elections and then into Cleveland.
So they're going to make two stops along the way?
Correct.
Okay.
And then the rest of the loop will be two stops until they return to the maintenance garage.
Okay.
So we're only using two buses? We have how many in storage?
We're about, I think we have about six or seven now. We pressed several of them into service to retire our buses.
Or are you new with the other five? Are we still looking at possibly losing those, then?
I'm actually going to ask the FTA to let us see how the service progresses before they force into a decision. I still think that if we can make something work up here, I really would like to look at that North Ridgefield issue. You know, Commissioner Williams, you brought that up to me, and I still think there's great potential down there. One of the pro, let me state this problem clearly so you understand. RTA gives a $5 round all-day ride on their bus over in Cuyahoga County, but they have a 1% sales tax supporting their transit over there. If they had a 1% sales tax supporting our transit here, we'd be given an all-day free ride. The, there's no way--
In Rolls-Royce buses.
Right. So, you know, I have to figure out the North Ridgefield issue down there and make it cost-effective for people not to go another five or six miles down the road to catch RTA and support our transit down in that area, and I believe that a solution can be teased out. But I've been busy working on the northern route, and I know you sent me out there to count license plates one day over there by Great Northern in the lot there, and there's plenty of Lorraine County, and I was only joking, you were going to send me out there, but you suggested that if we take a look. There's plenty of Lorraine Countyans parking in that lot and jumping a shuttle, and we may be able to produce a better service for them, but we'll have to look at it. What I'm encouraged about down there, though, is it's a clearer line all the way up into Cleveland, so the route timing will be shorter, and the, you know, fuel costs and things like that will be reduced. I'm really, really anxious to see if we can do something there, because I would like to put an airport route back on for the students, especially the students out of Oberlin that used it. If we continue with the Oberlin route and we have the Elyria route, it would be kind of long and tedious, but they could potentially make it out to the airport vis-à-vis the having shuttle out of North Ridgefield. So something for us to think about and take a look at, but we need to make this somewhat workable up here first.
I have had nothing but positive comments about this route, and also I've had a few people suggest why not have a bus route that goes to the Cleveland Browns games or the Indians games and things like that, so that might be something we might want to look at also.
Yeah, a couple of things with that. I believe it can generate a considerable amount of use. I have to see how it works with going to the games and getting back because of the volume. If you take somebody to the game, you'd darn well better have a seat to take them back home. And I don't know if we're allowed to sell tickets just if you don't buy a round-trip ticket, you can't get on the bus, with regards to the rules we operate under the FTA. I don't want people, you know--
You want to run a charter service?
Well, you know what happens, Ted, is you go into the Browns game with some friends, you lose your friends, or you get into a little drunken argument, and so you'll take the bus back, and then people that took the bus in are standing there and don't have a ride home. So, you know, that doesn't make for really good service or happy residents. So this, you know, I got to look at what constraints we can place upon that so that we can ensure that if we take them there, we can take them back home. The, so while you don't think that would be a considerable problem, I think it could end up being a situation. But I want to look at that also, if we can make something here work better. Let me also state, and I know this has been a long presentation, but I continue to see, you know, comments and hear comments from folks about, well, we don't run enough service for people in the county, and here we are running service for the people that want to gamble at the casino and how stupid it is. We ain't running service for people going to gamble at the casino. We're going to use them to run a service for the people that need to get to Cleveland. And we've gotten a lot of emails from students and people that work and people that are coming from back and forth that will probably use the service. I'm hoping that there's enough people that want to just recreate at the casino to underpin this service that we can provide. We would not be having this conversation about Cleveland service if we didn't think that the casino people would generate enough ridership to support the people who actually have need ridership.
Correct. That's how this conversation came about months ago.
And that's how this conversation should continue every time we have a chance. I could really care less about people getting on the bus to go gamble at the casino. I do care about people getting on the bus to go downtown or people that may have to work down there or may have other, more serious reasons to be in the downtown area. And I was surprised to learn that there's a few people that actually work out here and live out that way and want to take the bus here, which was surprising to me. So let's see what happens, but for no way, no how are we doing this for casino gamblers.
How does it constitute it being a charter? Because I know, like, the charter buses that do go to the casino, for instance, and somebody paying $10 for the bus ride there is actually getting, like, $30 in casino play. Are we allowed to get kickbacks from the casino for the people that ride the bus?
I don't know.
For people, not for us.
I don't know. First it was blackmailing, now it's kickbacks.
Not for us, for the people that are riding the bus.
I just want to know what she asked for, the kickbacks.
Not for us, for the people on the bus riding the bus.
I understand, Commissioner. You mean, you would probably be incentives.
I think the rules under the point-to-point or the charter services, you don't have stops in between. It's select service, you're going to one place, dropping off, picking back up.
Right.
It's a real gray area when you start--
We're not chartering. We're running an open route.
Route.
We're running an open--
Anybody can get on, anybody can get off, anywhere with the--
Now--
But I'm trying, what I'm asking is can we get money for those people riding the bus from the casino to get extra play money or some kind of extra money for the transit service?
Well, I'm going to send them my advertising package. They can certainly buy some advertising on the buses, but I'm not sure they will.
They're paying people to go to the casino now.
Well--
On other buses.
On--
On charter buses.
From Lorraine County?
Yeah.
I'm unaware of that.
Yeah, like St. Anthony's, I think, has a bus that they basically give them money--
They're negotiating with the churches and things like that to run busloads of people there.
Yeah, they are.
I understand that, but I'm doing public service here.
Right, I know, but--
The, I can certainly, I can certainly ask them to buy some advertising on the buses, but--
That's as much as we can do.
That's pretty much--
The casino could always say, "Show us your LCT pass, we'll give you 20 bucks in free play."
Or something like that, yeah. That's what I mean. I'd like to see something from the casinos for the people going to spend money there.
I'll see what I can do. I just don't want to cross the line.
Yeah, that's right. I didn't know where the--
The, this is open, this is an open route. It's our Cleveland, Cleveland route, and I'll keep you, you know, in the loop over the neck after the first few weeks about how the ridership goes. Because quite frankly, if I don't see the ridership developing strongly in the first, you know, six to eight weeks, we may not have to go all the way down the road with it to see what, but I want to see how the advertising goes, too. I think I'm going to be able to sell most of the advertising pretty quickly.
Okay.
Okay. The only thing I would like to see changed on here, you know, by preference, I don't like to have my name on the buildings other than the one I work in. On the backside, you have Lorraine County Board of Commissioners, and then you have our names. I would like to have those removed.
I didn't even catch that, Commissioner.
Why don't we just say the Lorraine County Board of Commissioners?
You're right. Even the second box, it says funding in cooperation with the Lorraine County Commissioners. That, to me, would be adequate.
Okay, I understand.
Not particular what it says. Mish, you care what it says on the back of it?
Nope.
I don't care.
Okay.
Okay.
Done.
Done?
Yeah, I think that's enough for, I think that's enough for this morning.
Mr. Anis, Assistant County Prosecutor?
Commissioners, I do have an update on two matters of pending court action, and I need to discuss the details regarding a third pending court action. In executive session, please.
Commissioner's report.
Well, first of all, I was saying when I read the paper today, a really, really great, wonderful guy passed away, Joel Smith, owned Rosewood, and I was glad to see the picture they chose for his obituary. He just had the biggest smile in that picture, and that's how I always remember him. He's always had a smile on his face and always tried to, you know, be cheerful, even going through what he went through through his illness, and he's going to be missed by many people. So my condolences and prayers to his family. Monday, I had a Goodwill Board meeting, and it was bittersweet. It was a good meeting, but it was a goodbye party for Bob Reese, who is retiring. One of his things that he was, really wanted to accomplish is to try to get rid of what he called the counterfeit boxes, those drop-off boxes where you can donate clothing and shoes, because we don't know where the proceeds to the money for those types of boxes go to. So I'm going to work on that on his behalf. I don't know if you've noticed, but every time I go past it, one of those, it's either, you know, it doesn't say clothes, shoes, and a chair, or clothes, shoes, and a couch, but there's always, like, big things next to those getting soaked by rain, and I'm thinking, why don't they just donate to Goodwill? Because they do so much good with the money that they receive from those donations. Tuesday, all three commissioners attended. We had both the Transportation Improvement District meeting and also the Stormwater District meeting. Tonight, we have a big steak fry, but we also have to be here for that conference call, or do we, can we call in from another location, Jim?
We're going to be briefed on that with Mr. Anis in executive session.
Am I invited to the steak fry?
Pardon me?
Am I invited to--
Sure.
Told you you're on the menu.
We thought you were, we thought you were cooking, they have an extra special treat for you there.
It's the Democratic Steak Fry tonight, so I told them I would go and cook, but--
Did you see the menu, Republican shish kebab?
Well, you know, there's a lot of good people over there, and, you know, me and Dennis Flores can catch up. He can tell me what's going on in the Democratic Party.
Or the Tea Party. Okay, that's the end of my report.
Oh, let's go. Great fair week. Congratulations to Megan Bremke as President of the Fair. She did a great job as usual. Great turnout for the auctions, cult manufacturing, Sturks. Everybody just stepped right up to the plate. I mean, it was very nice. I ended up with a lamb myself, and Ben Flicker and I got the reserve champion goat.
I heard you bid up the price of the champion goat pretty good.
Grand champion goat went two and a half times record. Ben and I stopped at 2,400 and went to 2,500 Sturks Catering.
Yeah, I'm sure Sturks is real happy with you.
They could have let us just have it. So I got to figure out how Ben and I are going to cook a goat now. Also--
He's down from a donkey to a goat.
Oh, so many ways we could go with that.
Yeah, I guess. Also, last night, Executive Committee of Lorraine County Democrat Party met. I discussed our levies, the 911 replacement and the TB replacement reduction, and they both have endorsed it unanimously, so we can use that wherever we need. I would hope Tom would get the same thing from the Republican County Party to endorse. It is a bipartisan issue, as I explained. 911 is sort of like an insurance policy.
We have a packet for Johnson and Torellis, basically for them to come in and do a study. There's going to be no cost for us on the study. If we want to go through and get the engineering work done, then we would have to pay for it.
A study for what?
Go ahead.
We've been down this road before. It's an energy conservation study.
Oh, so what we did years ago, and we did all the building, what's this areas for?
No, there's some, the regulation's been fresh and a little bit, that allows some, a little bit different opportunity. We don't have a lot of buildings that would benefit, but we're getting a little aged over at Job Family Services with the infrastructure was 1995-ish, so there may be some opportunities there. Board of Elections, some HVAC systems there that we may benefit from some work there, and the, we're going to look at some of the smaller outline buildings. Clearly, the biggest ability was the Justice Center, this building, the jail. But all of those have been done in the last couple of years, so we're getting all the, we teased out all the efficiencies we can get. And in fact, I just got from Lisa this morning, we transferred our money to pay the debt service. We've only missed it one year, the savings, one year out of all of them, and we're back in the, in the black with regard to the savings paying for the debt service on all the upgrades that were done, a couple million dollars, several million dollars. But I'm interested in seeing if we can't get something going on those other buildings, and if we do this project, we can pay for that new infrastructure under this House bill with the energy savings.
So that's still available, but under a new?
It's under a new House bill. The, I did look at the House Bill 295. Commissioner, it has no applicability to us. I don't know if I sent you an email on that--
No, you didn't.
But it only, it talks about the financing of a project, and it gave different terms for the financing, but it didn't really work for us. The look would be at no cost, but they'll recommend solutions, but if they go, if you want to go further than the recommendation, because it would require, you know, engineering and RFPs and specifications that you have to pay for. Now, you pay for, you only pay for that if you don't go forward with a project. If you take their recommended engineering, you can fold the cost of that into the energy conservation upgrade, into all of that, and it can be all part of the bond and the capital infrastructure improvement. But if you choose not to progress after the engineering is done, then you have to pay for the engineering.
Correct.
The entering to the MOU is strictly an administrative function. I can do that. It doesn't require a resolution, but I wanted to make sure the board was briefed on what was going on, and I met with these individuals, with Commissioner Williams, and as I recommended several years ago, and the board did, I think we should take a look at this again.
Okay. Look at what you're writing.
Appreciate.
Okay. Here's the MOU.
And last week, the governor actually had a meeting with resident, or not residents, with individuals from Lorraine County and the surrounding counties, including the schools, on how to come up with a regional approach for transportation, reducing costs. So I have some information in my office that I will be passing out to you as well. So, end of my report.
Report correspondents?
Move the reading be waived?
Second.
Discussion? Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Public comment?
Anybody wishing to come up and address the board?
I think we put them all to sleep.
Seeing none, I move we go into executive session as outlined by the Administrator and Assistant County Prosecutor. Second.
Second.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
This has been a broadcast of the recent Lorraine County Commissioners' General Meeting. Unless otherwise announced, meetings are held Wednesday morning at 9:30 at the Administration Building, 226 Middle Avenue, fourth floor, downtown Elyria. These are public meetings, and you are invited to attend. Agendas are posted prior to the meeting at www.lorainecounty.us. Click on Departments to see the Commissioners' page, and click on View Agenda for a printable copy of the agenda.